Good evening. The Town of Los Gatos special meeting of the Town Council Study Session is called to order. I wonder if you could take the role, please?
Certainly. Councilmember Risto.
Here.
Councilmember Badami.
Here.
Councilmember Rennie.
Here.
Vice Mayor Moore.
Here.
Mayor Hudes.
Here. Okay. So with that, this is a study session, and so the format is a little bit different in a couple of ways. First of all, we will have verbal communications, but that will be only on items that are on the agenda, different from our normal one. And since it is a study session, no votes or actions may be taken, but there may be follow-up with an agenda item on a regular council meeting. My guess is that probably August or September. So anyway, we thank you all for your participation, and I think we should do, first of all, verbal communications. So let's see, is there anyone in the audience who'd like to speak about the item, which is the Town Council Code of Conduct Policy and the Proposed Board Committee and Commission Code of Conduct Policy? And we can take comments either from people in person or online, but it needs to be about that topic. So I have three here so far. Jeffrey Blum, and then Eleanor Yick, and then Gus Who.
Yeah, Jeffrey Blum, that'd be me. Good evening. My name is Jeffrey Blum. I serve on the Community Health and Senior Services Commission, but I speak tonight solely on my own behalf. I want to briefly address two concerns. First, the directive requiring commission communications to get prior approval. Second, the proposed Code of Conduct Policy vis-a-vis boards and commissions. Recently, our commission was told we must get approval before contacting outside parties, even just to gather information. That's incorrect. There's no adopted rule requiring such pre-approval. The outreach was proposed to mental health providers and local service agencies, took no position, asserted no policy, and followed longstanding practice. It was squarely within our advisory role. Just as importantly, commissioners retain First Amendment rights. Courts have consistently affirmed that appointed officials may speak, inquire, and seek information so long as they don't claim to speak officially for the town. Commissioners are allowed to engage third parties, gather facts, and communicate. That's not only legal, it's essential to transparent, responsive government. Requiring blanket pre-approval risks a constitutional prior restraint. It chills speech and discourages volunteer participation, the lifeblood of our boards and commissions. Regarding the proposed Code of Conduct Policy, while its goal is professionalism, the draft goes too far. It mandates pre-approval of nearly all communications, bars commissioners from responding to the media, and introduces vague disciplinary categories like minor breaches of decorum or unprofessional conduct. These are subjective, open to abuse, and raise due process concerns. Other nearby cities strike a better balance. They allow commissioners to speak freely. We're not claiming to represent this city and discipline only for clear, defined misconduct. I urge the town to revise the policy to protect commissioners' right to speak and gather information, allow advisory commissions to communicate without censorship, and ensure disciplinary rules are clear, limited, and fairly enforced. Los Gatos depends on engaged citizens. Let's not silence that civic spirit with overbroad rules. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there questions, Vice Mayor?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Blum. I really appreciate the comments you provided this evening and also what you provided to us in advance of the meeting. I thought it was very helpful. I just wanted to ask, so if you, if we were to incorporate some version of what the language that you provided to the council and also were to remove the requirement of distributing communications to the staff liaison, do you think that would meaningfully address most of your concerns?
Absolutely.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah. Incidentally, I don't know if I can do this, but I came up with a longer, detailed version of a proposed policy. I don't know if I can share it or not.
You can provide that, and we can get copies to everyone.
That would be great. Thank you.
Thank you. I had a question. So the concerns that you raised, so we're kind of looking at three different things here. We have the current council policy code of conduct, which applies to commissions. Then we have a draft that was reviewed by the Council Policy Committee. Then we have a staff report of, that actually includes some alternatives. Your concerns, are they specific to the one or other of those three?
I looked at the alternatives, and I think that was my primary concern, looking at the alternatives and some of the proposed language in that.
Okay, so you have concerns with the alternatives that have been proposed?
I do, yeah.
Okay. Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Eleanor Yick, and then Gus Who.
Good evening, Mayor Hudes, Vice Mayor Moore, and council members. My name is Eleanor Yick, current Chair of the Community Health and Senior Services Commission, although tonight I wish to address you, the council, as an individual, longtime community resident. I have two concerns about the proposed revisions to the Boards Committee and Commission Code of Conduct. First, and very briefly, I wish to address Article VII, enforcement about complaints regarding violation of the Code of Conduct. I am concerned that I do not see as part of the policy and procedures that the person whom the complaint has been lodged against is not immediately informed and given a copy of the complaint. I think that is a vital first step that should be inserted into the procedures. Secondly, I would like to address Article VI, Section B, 1, 2, and 3, regarding commission communications. While I can understand the rationale for such positions from both the council and staff perspective, as an individual member of the community and as a commissioner, I feel it gravely impacts the ability of all commissions to perform worthwhile and valuable work. I have enjoyed serving on the CHSSC the past four years because I felt the commission was doing valuable work and was a good use of my volunteer time. I couldn't gather important data, forge meaningful relationships with service providers, and provide updates and insights to the council that the council and the staff in your official capacity might not be privy to. If I am unable to identify myself as a representative of the CHSSC, it severely impacts my ability to ask for and gather important information, not necessarily and not related to policy issues. Speaking from my long experience in publication, I know that if I were approached for certain information from someone I did not know, or someone who did not represent some kind of an official body, I would not be inclined to give any information. In my opinion, if commissions are going to be so restricted in their ability to interact with public entities, I question the formation of any commissions. If commissions are unable to gather data, assess it, and make recommendations, why have them at all? I think the council values and wants the commissions to do valuable work. These proposed policy revisions need to be modified. Thank you. Yes?
Yeah, thank you. Thanks for your comments. Again, I wanted to focus your concerns on the draft that we have in front of us.
I read all the drafts.
Okay.
Yes, and I'm relating to some of the suggested alternate language that was still included in the last draft I read.
Okay, thank you. And maybe specifically with regard to communications on external representation? It talks about not authorized, commissioners are not authorized to represent the town outside official commission meetings unless specifically authorized to do so by the Town Council. Is that one of the areas that you're concerned about?
Yes, I am. Based on past practice, where the four years that I have been on the commission, we've been able to approach our service providers and ask for updates on their program, number of people being served, et cetera, et cetera, sustainability needs, et cetera, and then bring that information back. And I don't believe we have had specific authorization on any one activity. And my impression from reading it, with this new process where you develop a work plan, you need to very specifically list all the activities that you anticipate at the beginning of the year that you're going to want to do, and then you need to get approval on them. And then the work product really isn't coming from CHSSC, it's coming from staff, because you're having staff, let's say, develop the questionnaire or develop the survey. And then when you get that back, I assume you'd be able to go out to the constituents. So it slows the process down, but it really isn't representative, I think, of the, not the opinions, but the work product from CHSSC. It's a staff work product.
Okay. And if I could follow up, the concern that you've raised, is it primarily about the role of commissioners in gathering information, or is it the role of commissioners in representing the town in the matter of concern, representing the opinion or position of the town?
Well, I think it's both. It's hard to really separate them. As I give in one example here, if I approach somebody, i.e. take any service provider, and say, "Oh, I live in Los Gatos, and I'd like to find out this information about your service that you're offering to our community. How many people do you serve? What's your funding? What's your budget?" If I were in that position, and I don't know who you are, number one, or I find out that you really don't represent any official body of some kind, I personally, I'm not going to answer you.
I understand that. That has to do with the representation of speaking on behalf.
Of the commission.
Correct. But the concern I have is about representing a position of the town. So if a commissioner were to represent the position of a town, and I don't mean the appointment, I mean a policy position or something like that, is that something that there should be some checks and balances, or should commissioners be free to represent that they're speaking a position of the town?
I know I have never personally spoken about a position of the town. It's always been very general. You know, I'm a member of the CHSSC, and people ask, "Well, what do you do? And what are you all about?" And I'm never saying, "Well, the town has a policy that we're going to provide, let's say, meals to seniors." So I don't think any commissioner has ever done that, and I don't think that would be an issue. I don't want to represent an official policy. I want to informally, as a commissioner, gather information and bring that back.
Okay, thank you. That's really helpful.
Sure.
Councilmember Badami has a question.
Actually, I'm looking at Councilmember Risto.
Sorry? Okay. Yeah, that picture's very small, so, clerk, if I could get a little help with those hand raises, that would be really helpful. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. So I keep putting my hand up and down, and I realize I'm going to be hard to see all night. So thank you, Councilmember Badami, for keeping an extra eye out. Thank you, Ms. Yick. I can appreciate what you're saying. I mean, having sat on commissions, one of the things I'm grappling with, or I have a question for you, is, let's see, as you're talking about the policy in terms of speaking on behalf of the commission, I think, well, what I'd like to find is a fine line where if it's not a defined commission priority, such as the commissioners are going to go out and gather information from policy providers and get data, and it's more of you're trying to get information and understand if this is something the commission should pursue or you want to make a priority or just get information on behalf of the community, would you be comfortable talking to someone and saying, you know, "I sit on the Community Health and Senior Services Commission. We're not doing an official survey right now, but I'm gathering information for my own education to see what we might want to move forward in the future." I mean, I'm trying to find a middle ground where you're not creating a priority of the commission that has not been approved, but of course commissioners are kind of the eyes and ears to our community in their specific areas and can gather information on a regular basis. Does something like that make sense to you, or?
I had difficulty understanding some of what she was saying. Did anybody else experience that, or is it just me? It just seems a little garbled to me. I think what the question is, so correct me if I'm wrong, I think what I heard you asking was, would I feel comfortable saying, "Oh, I'm a member of CHSSC, but I'm here today as an individual, and I'd like to ask you some questions"? Is that kind of the gist of it?
Right. Something like, as a commissioner, you're trying to educate yourself on these topics so that you can then bring it forward as a priority if you've got enough information, or something like that, where you can make it clear that you're not acting on behalf of the commission? I don't know.
Yeah, I need to think that over a bit more. I don't think it's clear enough, then. I guess what would be comfortable for me would be to say, you know, "I'm a member of the CHSSC Commission, and I'm here to gather some information." But I think I need to have that identifying characteristic. Otherwise, I don't have really the ability to gather the kind of information that we would be interested in getting, I think.
Right. I think like somehow finding a distinction between being able to introduce yourself as a commissioner, but point out that you're doing the work on your own. Because I think one of the things we're grappling with is trying to keep a fine line between town employees who actually do the work of the town and commissioners who contribute in specific areas. Okay, well, I appreciate your input. I appreciate your comments, because I think this gets a little tricky, and it's important to hear the viewpoint of the commissioners and how you feel this will enhance or inhibit your ability to do a good job for us and for yourself.
You know, I think if we never say, and we haven't say, we don't represent ourselves as asking about a policy issue that the town has, we're avoiding all of that. We're gathering general information in our quote-unquote oversight of, let's say, senior services that are provided in the community. I think the issue to me is, what I was reading through the packet was, the key point was policy issues, and we're not representing policy issues of the town. And I feel that I can speak as a CHSSC commissioner and say, "Part of our mission is to meet with our service providers and gather data on your program," let's say. And there would be other instances, but that's the one I think of firsthand. So perhaps there is some kind of middle ground in terminology. I just don't have it off the top of my head and can't respond to that.
Okay, thank you.
Vice Mayor has a question?
Yeah, maybe one last question. So I'm, to sort of distill this down even further, I'm hearing you interpret this policy as not letting you say, "I am a town commissioner," right? Like, "I am a town commissioner in sort of any setting that you're in." And being able to say, "I'm a town commissioner," would that, you know, help?
Well, I think if I can't do that, I can't do the work that the commission is supposed to do.
Absolutely, yeah. That's what I understand.
Yeah, that's the bottom line for me.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Hi, guys. I'd rather probably do this offline, because, you know, we all get recorded, and I'm more an offline, you know, I'm anti-government, I protest. I'll hand you out these protests that I protested. But what I see is, and what I've been saying, is a civil war, and there's legal, codes of conduct.
So if I could ask if your comments are pertinent to the Code of Conduct that we're looking at?
Yes, codes of conduct.
Because the Code of Conduct of the Town of Los Gatos.
I'm saying.
Because there will be opportunity to speak about broader items at the beginning of our next meeting?
Yes, I understand that.
Thank you.
But I'm just trying to give you a lead-in. And what I'm trying to say is, there's legal ramifications of what you, what governments say and put out. The governments, you know, you're getting, you, two of you are getting sued because of what you said, or, well, I don't know, I didn't read the complaint. But what I'm just trying to say is, there's legal ramifications, there's, you know, there's censorship going on, you know, you have to censor what you're saying. A lot of this could be behind closed-door talking, and then you word things, you know. I would disagree, because you put, when somebody says, "I'm a commissioner," or "I'm this or that," you're representing somebody. You know, I say, "I'm a soccer player," or, you know, "I played football." I'm representing, you know, this is a sport. But there's a wide range of different cultures, especially in soccer. So that's where I'm trying to come from. There's, like, I go by unwritten rules. I go by street smarts is a better-than-book smarts type of person. And I do, you know, I'm not to get into a lot of little things, but I'm just trying to get the codes, if we can all agree to like a standard Christian code, or, you know, that, because what's going to happen is, you know, hey, right now, who's safe? Can we put our kids in churches or in schools? And, you know, it's those types of things. And so I'm just, I'd rather not, you know, I'd rather sit down in not three minutes, but, you know, ask questions off the cuff and, you know, do things that way, because there are issues, real issues, like Real ID and stuff like that, that I did file a lawsuit about Real ID, because you have to go in, and I'm saying to...
I want to again remind you, Real ID has nothing to do with the Code of Conduct for the council.
Well, it's just, it's just a basic right.
I understand.
To do stuff, and that's what I'm trying to say. We're to argue over little things, but one of them is just, who are we representing? Are you a Real ID? Because ICE agents are coming in as other agents and saying, "Hey, I'm walking into a school and saying I'm a social worker," and they're taking kids out of the school. So those are the kind of questions, those are legal questions that have to be determined, too. So you have to look at legal questions, too, on this, not on this Code of Conduct. Okay?
Thank you.
Here, I'll drop these off.
Okay. I don't have any other speakers' cards here. Is there anyone who would like to speak who's here? Okay, is there anyone on Zoom who would like to speak?
There are no hands raised on Zoom.
Okay. So, yes, Councilmember Badami.
When you're ready for questions from council members, I have one.
We're closing public comment. We're ready.
Okay, thank you. Okay, thank you. I want to make sure that we all understand the expected outcome of tonight's study session. There are some recommendations here that maybe staff is looking for us to approve some changes, or approve a temporary suspension of restrictions. Will we be taking possibly individual votes as council members as to what direction we want to take, so that the audience knows that there may be votes tonight, and there may be some action, although not formal, because it would still come back? I just want to make sure that we're on the same page on this.
We definitely need one vote on the suspension. The other two can be direction to staff to come back with a finalized version for your approval.
Okay, so with direction, you're still not going to be asking for a majority vote from, if the majority of council want to take it one way or another, but you might interpret it a certain way when you come back?
It is the preference of the council if you desire to take a formal vote on a specific action, or whether you just want to give direction. If it looks like there's concurrence, generally, of the majority, then we can just proceed with that being the final language you want to see for formal approval.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Rennie?
That's not a question. I wanted to kind of point out a high-level issue I see, focusing on the commission part, because that's what's been talked about. I think the problem I'm seeing is this, it feels like this is written mostly towards rules for our quasi-judicial decision-making body, which generally, most of what they do is they gather information that they're all supposed to know in order to make quasi-judicial decisions. So there needs to be a lot of control around that to make sure it's done in a way that's fair and legal. Then we have other commissions, as the ones that have been speaking, that do a lot more research, and it's a different type of activity that kind of needs different rules around it to some extent. You know, one thing, so what I didn't see in here was specifically, you know, when you're making quasi-judicial decisions, you shouldn't do X, Y, and Z, which was kind of surprising, but I saw other things trying to control that. And then on the flip side of it, it's things like, what about the Parks Commission or the Community Health and Senior Services Commission tabling at Spring in the Green? And they're sitting there, and they want to talk about their commission. "I'm a commissioner, and these are what we're doing." And we're saying, well, they can't represent the commission or talk about what the commission is doing. So I feel like we've tried to do a one-size-fits-all when we have commissions that actually are kind of different-focused or different jobs. So before we get into details, I wanted to hopefully make us think about that a little bit.
Okay, thank you for those comments. Because we had to take public comment first, we weren't able to get the benefit of our staff perspective on this, and I know they've done a lot of work on it. Would staff like to walk us through this and get feedback as we go, or would you just like to have comments come at you?
We could start at the beginning, but let me just address what it seems like, the comment that we've talked about so far on the public members. The policy does not prohibit a commissioner from being able to speak. It requires the council's permission, which could be provided through the work plan. And so I know we've changed this last year in implementing a work plan, and it may not have been fully conveyed to all the commissions, but the goal is, if you're going to conduct a survey on behalf of the commission to gather input, not a problem. We approve it on the work plan and allow, make sure that the language is saying, "This is an official request for information from the town and the commission," that it's authorized. The same way that when Complete Streets had to ask commissioners to do pedestrian and bicycle counts out in public right-of-ways, my preference would have been, it is approved under a work plan item, and we provide them some document that they're ever approached by somebody asking, "Why are you looking at my kids, you know, here on the path?" They can hand that to them and say, "On behalf of the town, we are conducting pedestrian and bicycle counts. Here, if you have a concern, there's a phone number here. You can contact staff," to protect a commissioner from the work that they're actually doing. None of this is intended to stop or chill the First Amendment expression of an individual that may serve on a commission, but if it's going to invoke the authority of the commission of the town, it's the council that has to set the direction of what their expectations are. Absent that, we will have what I've seen over the course of the last seven months, is some inconsistencies from one commission to the other, where they are able to go out and engage in an activity that they desire as a commissioner and give the impression that it's authorized or sanctioned by the town or the commission, when in fact it may not be. And then we have a complaint coming on the back end as to why, what is this person doing? Is it authorized? This makes it very clean, that you're able to define what you're expecting of the commission, and then they are able to go out with something in hand that protects them, that this is an official action that they're taking. So that is to address that matter. And for a commission that doesn't have that ability, we can easily change that with modifying their work plan to accommodate it. So I want to go back and, if I may, or take questions on this topic.
Yeah. Do you want to talk about, because we seem to have gravitated to the commission policy, do we want to do that now and go in-depth, and then go back to the council policy, or would you rather do council first?
I'd rather do council, because we're looking at about an hour and 15 minutes before the next council meeting, and at least if we can knock one out and have one that can come back for action, we won't end up four months later still discussing it.
Great. Thank you.
So what you have in the packet is several attachments. Attachment number one is a redline version that comes from the Policy Committee and their recommendation. Attachment two is some alternative language after hearing some of the discussion about concerns about what the Policy Committee was recommending. We've tried to take a stab at maybe addressing some of those and cleaning up the language a little bit to give you a second option, so you can choose between the two, or at least have a starting point to be able to modify from that. The third attachment is the original code of conduct, and the fourth one, which isn't necessary, it was, I took the code of conduct and broke it down into constituent elements, identifying the changes between the existing policy and the proposed. I realized when I got to nearly the end of what's almost 100 lines of elements, that is probably not going to be the most effective tool for the council to use, but I put it here only to be able to reference if you desire. So what I want to do is, do you want me to go through the committee's recommendation, or would you like me to go through the alternate language version?
Yeah, for me, I think we've read both of them. So I think that the alternate would be a good starting point for the council.
So I won't go through all the changes or some typos and little changes that we have there. The two major areas of discussion, there's a third one. We added some quasi-judicial language, which is an obligation of the council, just to clarify that. But the three, the two areas that are really the important ones are Section 11, which is page seven of the policy, or page 27 of the PDF. And under that Section 11, "Council Communication with the Public and Other Council Members," we just reframed the language of what was in the original policy, added some bullet points to make it cleaner to read, and then had the last bullet point, which is on page eight, the next page, a general caveat that there's an expectation that you communicate honestly, respectfully, and transparently, and not, and avoid statements or implications that could mislead the public in the official position of the town, just in case the other bullet points didn't cover that. It's substantially just like what the Policy Committee presented, but just framed it a little differently. And then the next section is a holistic change, and it's in terms of the enforcement. When I first arrived to the town, the process was that the mayor, town attorney, and the town manager would gather after a code of conduct complaint came in, and in effect, investigate the code of conduct, which is a problem, because under the code of ethics, at least for my profession, I can't investigate my own bosses in that fashion. And so we took a different approach, the classification of what is minor and major, and farmed it out to a law firm to make that determination, which then added substantial cost to get to something that, when you really think about, it's really fundamental. As a council member, when, if you've defined standards for yourself and a council member violates it, unlike what could happen with staff, the only penalties that could be adhered to on a council member are very limited, limited to the ones that you're willing to impose. It doesn't necessarily result in removing a council member from the council itself. It doesn't equal criminal sanctions or anything of that nature. You can censor, you can take off of committees and representations the town has, and you can restrict from trainings and travel and the rest of the like. So when you look at this, then, the fundamental premise is, if there's a concern that a council member did something in violation of the policy, it should be the council deciding whether they did or didn't, and not necessarily triggering a full investigation. And if you're going to do that, it didn't make sense to have every case that comes forth always go to a council meeting, because then what you end up doing is weaponizing a process, when you're trying to really just get to the appropriate code of conduct and ensuring that folks are operating in the manner that you desire. And so what you'll see here is, when a code of conduct violation comes in, it would come into the town clerk's office, who will log and maintain the documents according to our document retention schedule. Within five days, we will convey the totality of that information that's provided to all five council members at the same time. And then, after we've conveyed that to the full council, the ball now goes into the council's court. If a council member believes that there is something to be addressed from the code of conduct, you can choose to take the informal route first, which is engage that council member in the conversation about what the conduct was, how you felt about that, and see if you're able to get redressed that way, in which case you could also request that the town attorney or town manager sit there with you, so that it's more than just the two of you, although we're not going to be the ones involved in making the decisions. Or if that doesn't work, or the issue is significant enough, you can trigger the more formal option, which would go as follows. At a regular scheduled meeting of the council, during council matters, a council member can request the town staff agendize a code of conduct complaint against a council member, and if there is a second council member that concurs with agendizing that matter, we will agendize that full submission to the council at a future meeting, and then the council can discuss it, and then make a determination of any course of action that needs to be taken from that, completely eliminating staff from being in the middle of either investigating or farming out to law firms for any and all cases that may come here, and really set it to the direction of the council. So that in a nutshell is where the recommended language is in the alternate version for the council. And with that, I'll turn it back to the mayor.
Thank you. I think maybe we should just take comments and discussion on 11 first, and then move to 12. You covered both of those. So do council members have any comments on 11? Yeah, Councilmember Rennie?
So I feel like we're flipping, particularly, you know, the comment about community events, but generally, I feel like we're flipping the way I learned to do this. When I first got on council, I don't know if it was exactly in the policy, I have to go back and check, but I felt like I was taught, as a council member, once a decision was made, I was supposed to represent the decision of the council, not undermine it, right? The way this is written is, you know, I'm at a community event. I'm not supposed to represent the council. I'm now supposed to talk about my opinion, which does exactly that. It undermines the decision of the council. Instead of saying, "The council made this decision, whether I supported it or not, I'm supporting the council's position." The way this is written is I'm supposed to say, "Well, my opinion is X, which, you know, those idiots on the council voted for this, and I told them it was stupid. You know, that's not what you want, but that's what this encourages." I mean, exaggerating a little, obviously. But I just want to point out, we're kind of flipping the way I learned to do this, was to try to support the decision of the whole versus now give my own opinion, which might differ. And I realize there are cases where council members want to maybe change it in the future or something like that, but I'm really worried about the undermining of the council as a whole's decisions. So I'll stop and see what people think of that.
Yeah, I would just comment. I think that's a valid point, and that it would, this section could be enhanced with some language about, you know, not restricting council members to only provide their personal opinion, but also provide a way to support decisions of council. I think this section could be enhanced with something like that, just my view on it.
Mr. Mayor, if I may clarify, it's a good point. We could clarify the language. The intent of it was not to prohibit you from representing what the town actually did. So we voted 5-0 to do the following, or we voted 3-2 to do the following. But it's really intended to focus specifically. In that, in those instances, I would deem that authorized by council, because you took an official vote. So you are authorized to represent the vote and the action that was actually taken. It's really intended to focus on unilaterally taking a position on what the town's position actually is as an individual council member, which may not be something that the council as a whole has discussed and taken.
So if I could, Mayor, the language says, "At public forums, provided it is made clear that you're not representing the official position of the town as a whole, unless specifically authorized to do so." I mean, for example, the Century Democratic Club, every year at Christmas time, asks people to come up and say, "What happened in your city during the year?" And 30 electeds come up and do that. And now it'd be weird if I'm saying, "Well, my opinion is this," versus everybody else saying what their city did. So again, that wording there doesn't seem to be allowing me to say, "Well, you know, we decided that our policy was safety first," or something like that, right? A clear vote of the town. It does, it seems to indicate I can't say that in that language.
I wonder if one way to cover both scenarios would be, once a decision has been made, any council may speak at a community event to explain the council's decision, and then otherwise, council members are speaking as individuals?
So if I would just point out, there's a section earlier about the mayor speaking about decisions that have been made. So I don't think you want to create such a loophole that you don't have the mayor given the first chance to speak about decisions that have been made. So maybe there's a way to do that in a little bit softer way, so that you don't have every council member running out after every meeting and stating what the decision was. But, you know, I kind of like the thing about community events, and that seems to be, you know, a place for doing this, where some of the other, some of the other things, I think, are in contradiction to that other section about the mayor.
It may be simplistic to just take that bullet point out. I think the rest of the language may be adequate enough to reflect how you are to convey yourself. The goal is not to restrict you from being able to talk, because either you're not the mayor or, you know, you always have to say it's your opinion. You're always a council member. And so being able to relate, what did the town actually do? And when you properly relate that, I think the last bullet point to catch all, honestly and transparently, then it's perfectly fine. You don't have to caveat it by saying, "I'm just one council member, but I think the council took a vote 5-0 to say A, B, C," when in fact, yes, we did. You just relate, the council took the following action with this vote.
I had a point on something else related to this, but if it's on that point, go ahead, Vice Mayor.
Yeah, I was just going to say, I think the, Councilmember Rennie brought up a good point. I actually didn't think about that. I think you're, what you're bringing up is legitimate. And so, yeah, I'd have to think, I like the suggestion of just deleting the community events, you know. I want to make sure, I think we're kind of walking a fine line here between maybe three things. One is the role of the mayor. Two is not dividing the council on, you know, being able to say, "The council did this," and, you know, third, wanting to represent our personal opinion. So I applaud y'all for taking a very fine crack at trying to do that. I think there's maybe a little bit more to be worked out here, but I think overall, I really like this section.
Councilmember Badami?
I'm looking at Councilmember Risto.
Thank you. Risto, please go ahead.
Thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Yeah, I agree. I think there are a lot of events that council members attend where we might be with a larger group, either, you know, a League of Women Voters, or other council people luncheons, or, you know, as Councilmember Rennie pointed out, if you're at a club somewhere, and there's other electeds talking about where their community, what their council's doing and what's happening, the mayor may not always be there. The mayor may not be part of that group. And so I think, you know, as a good council person, you want to be able to report out what's happening in your municipality. All of us should be representing what the majority vote is and supportive of that. You know, we passed a budget, we approved this, et cetera. And keeping in mind that, you know, I think the changes that are proposed still preserve the ability for when... preserve the ability for when, um, there's a request for a newspaper for, "Okay, this vote was just taken," the mayor is the spokesperson for that. I think we don't want to take away the mayor being spokesperson, but we also need to embrace opportunities when we're out in the public, that we can represent what actions the council has taken, whether you're in a community meeting, or at a luncheon, or something else. So I think, I think, um, I think the, uh, what the manager proposed would allow us to go forward with that, so I'm in support of that.
Councilmember Badami?
Uh, thank you, Mayor. So I, I'm going back to this community events and thinking that maybe we should eliminate it, and when we talk about public forums, you might have a council member that is, uh, running for reelection and has to attend certain forums, and is certainly going to be asked questions about their votes on things that might sway, uh, the public from wanting to vote for them or not. So, um, I would be in favor of perhaps just eliminating community events.
Yeah, and I would just, uh, agree that maybe community events isn't necessary. I think the other bullets are actually pretty close to our existing policy, um, providing a little bit more, um, detail, but I think it, they're, they reflect the tone. But there was one thing that was in the policy committee draft that I don't see here, and, um, I think it could, uh, could be valuable to include it. And that was in the definition of, uh, personal opinions, um, and there was language that said, "Personal opinion, including those made on behalf of another elected official, public agency, state agency, or political subdivision, are permissible if clearly characterized as personal opinion or policy change objectives, rather than the opinion of the full town council." And that, that doesn't seem to have survived into this section, and I think it's an important, it's an important, uh, inclusion for what we consider to be personal, um, positions. Does that, does that make sense, and are you able to track that language in the previous draft?
I, I'm not an understanding it, but I'm going back and looking at the general conduct language, which is very broad about being honest, respectful, and transparent, and avoiding any statements or implications that could mislead the public and other agencies. I don't know if that captures what you're trying to capture. I think originally, when we were looking at that language, it was very confusing as to what exactly are we referring to? Are we referring to a council member representing the position of another council member? Or are we, whether we're, or we're talking about ourselves?
No, I'm, I'm talking about when a council member is representing the position of another elected official, when they're working as capacity as a staff person for another elected official, that should be characterized as personal opinion, and they should state that when they're, um, when they're doing that regarding matters that are considered in Los Gatos. And it was in, um, I can point you back.
I know, I, no, no, I just, this clerk just pointed it out to me. No, it's not in, it's not in this alternative language.
Right. I would, I think it's important to have that, um, uh, because that is a clarification of what is, um, personal opinion. Vice Mayor?
Thank you. Um, so I think I'm probably only, the only one here who regularly speaks on behalf of another elected official. So when I'm, uh, uh, doing that, I'm not expressing my personal opinion, I'm expressing that elected official's opinion. So that would prohibit me from doing my job.
Well, how would the public know whether you're representing the position of Los Gatos?
Fair question. Um, you know, to, if you, we can, uh, get into that as much as you want. I, in my job specifically, I do not do anything that involves Los Gatos, um, and that's on purpose, to avoid any conflict of interest or perceived conflict of interest. So I, my understanding is that's taken care of in other ways, in the ways that, that I have to do that, because I think if I were working on issues, if I were working on a land use issues that involve the town of Los Gatos, I don't, I think those would be considered incompatible, and I couldn't do that, I couldn't be employed to do that. So I think that's taken care of in other ways, but maybe, um, the town attorney can chime in.
Um, sure, there's the State Political Reform Act, and that addresses when there's a conflict, um, between a position you're taking and a source of income to you. And then, um, and the question is, would it benefit, would a decision that you're making benefit the source of income to a council member? Um, and then, there's a doctrine in the government code about incompatible activities, um, that is not self-executing, that would require a local town policy to prohibit, to define what constitutes an incompatible activity. Um, and there's also a doctrine of incompatible offices, um, which is self-executing, and that provides that you can't have two elected position, elected or appointed positions, where one is in a position of oversight over the other.
Okay, and I'll, I'll just end with, um, the only thing I do for the elected official that I work for is, is work on healthcare policy, which does not impact the town of Los Gatos.
Yeah, I don't know, but I thought that the language that we had helped to clarify that, um, and, um, I can think of a lot of examples where a, an elected official at a county or state level may have a position on an issue, and someone who's working as paid staff for that position is, uh, stating those positions, um, and I think it's very important that that be considered a personal opinion, not representing the town's position on those issues. Um, I can think of, you know, several of, of those kinds of issues, um, and I'm not, you know, trying to create, um, a policy around an individual or, um, a particular assignment that the individual has, but, um, I think that that language, um, that helps define it would be important to include. So I'll, I'll read it again. It says, "Including those made on behalf of another elected official, public agency, state agency, or political subdivision, are permissible if clearly characterized as personal opinion or policy change objectives, rather than the opinion of the full town council." So, um, I think that's important. Anyway, uh, Councilmember Aristo?
Thank you. I, I don't want this policy to get so complicated that we're trying to anticipate every single edge case. I realize we, you know, Los Gatos is unusual in that we've almost never had any council members working for other elected officials, although it's quite typical in other municipalities. And to say that stating policy for your employer is personal opinion makes no sense at all. I would expect that if, if I were working for another elected official, if I were working for a state senator, as I'm speaking, I would introduce myself as a staffer, not as a council person. So I think when you introduce yourself, I don't think, that makes the role clear. And then you don't have to say it's your personal opinion, you're stating it in your capacity as a staffer. And at least, um, at least Councilmember Moore, when I've seen him in other events, he represents himself as, he had represented himself as working for Gail Pellerin, and he represents himself as working for, um, county supervisor, he doesn't introduce himself as vice mayor in those capacities. And I think that distinction, when you introduce your role, then the words that follow are reflective of that work, and saying it's your own opinion really actually negates the work you're doing. So that makes no sense to me.
Well, so I would ask, um, if I may, it negates the work that you're doing on behalf of this other elected official, or it negates the ability of you to do your job for the town of Los Gatos?
It negates, um, your authority as a staffer. If you say, you know, as a staff member of supervisor so-and-so, "This is my personal opinion," that's not your job. You're not, you're not giving your personal opinion, you're giving the policy outline. So I, I think the personal opinion part makes no sense to me. And I think that introducing yourself in your proper role is, sets the table and takes care of that.
Okay, Vice Mayor?
Yeah, I would just say, Councilmember Aristo stated that all very well. I, I, again, you know, being the person in this position, I, when I am speaking on behalf of another elected official, I am not stating my personal opinion. That's specifically what I'm not doing. So it, that, that wouldn't make sense to me, and I, I could not accept this change. Um, you know, if, if we want to get really myopic about it, I think, you know, if that's what's necessary, we can do that. Um, but I, it, the, the proposed language characterizes personal opinion, doesn't make sense for the roles that I am aware of in working for elected officials.
So I'll just finish my comment on this, in that this policy's being written on behalf of the town of Los Gatos, not being written on behalf of individuals who may choose to work for multiple agencies or jurisdictions. And so, um, I think it's important, um, and, uh, I think, you know, again, we're, we're not here to protect people's jobs, um, we're here to do the right thing, and to do, to have, follow ethics for the town of Los Gatos, and, um, so I'm gonna, I'm not gonna go further than that, but I think it's important. Okay, so, anything else on Section 11? Okay, um, Section 12, so enforcement, any, uh, specific comments or, uh, broad comments on, uh, this, uh, proposal, which is quite different than the policy that we have? Maybe I could just provide one, you know, context, that this, this, um, is very different, it's a, it's a departure from what the town has traditionally done, in that the town has traditionally used a committee to, uh, to look at, uh, the reporting of complaints and the investigation of complaints. And, uh, I think the, that, the makeup of that committee was problematic, in that it included staff. The proposal from the policy committee was to not have staff participate in that, but have that committee between the, um, the mayor and another council member. And so, just to point out, the, the, this is a, a departure from that, is that there's not a committee, it essentially goes to two council members to get it on the agenda, and then it's considered, um, immediately by the full, uh, council. So I, I just wanted to point that out. If that's, is that correct?
It is, but it also, it provides the informal option where the council member can go peer-to-peer outside of the public venue.
Right, okay, thank you. So are there, are there questions or comments about this? Yes. Councilmember Aristo?
Thank you. Uh, first comment is, I think this is much cleaner, I like the, um, this approach of this revision, I think it was getting all down in the weeds, and how do you make a committee, and how do you do all these investigations? And a lot of times, some of these, um, complaints can be just worked out with people talking like adults to each other, and so I think this is a vast improvement. I have a quick question, and that is, under B, procedures, number one, it talks about complaints by the public, and subset, it says, um, you know, complaints regarding council members submitted in writing to the mayor, complaint, if the complaint concerns the mayor, it must be submitted in writing to the vice mayor, and then the next line says, "The complaint shall also be copied and forwarded to the mayor." So if I read that, it sounds like only if the mayor is the subject of the investigation, does the mayor hear about the complaint, but it doesn't talk about if a council member receives a complaint, how they receive it. So I don't know, um, if staff can clarify, was that supposed to say it gets forwarded to the mayor, or was it supposed to get forwarded to the person about whom the complaint was registered?
Councilmember, what page on the PDF are you looking?
Oh, I'm sorry, page eight of 14. On, um, this is the red, redline version, um, so it's page, uh, sorry, 14 of the packet.
Okay, so I think you're looking at the attachment one, which is the policy committee's recommendation, so yes, that is what it says on the, on that one. On attachment two, which is page 20, 28 of the package, still on page eight of the policy, there's no mention, there's no mention of mayor, vice mayor, it's all the entire council at the same time?
Thank you, huge apologies, I've been getting in the wrong attachments, and one comment, the attachment name doesn't carry through, it's only on the first page, so I apologize, I got lost. Okay, thank you. That, so I do think that this new process is much better, and I support it.
Other questions, Vice Mayor?
I, I have a comment, just, yeah. Um, I, I really like the, the new proposal, I think, you know, my big concern during the, the, when we had this conversation last time, is that the process was opaque, and I think this creates a much more transparent process, um, so, you know, decreases the likelihood that it's, um, weaponized in any sort of unfair way, so I, um, I, I really like the, the new direction of this.
Councilmember Rennie?
I'm, I was okay with Section 12, I just want to note, I have an issue on Section eight, when you want to get to it.
We'll, we'll go back to Section eight later, let's try to work through this one. So, um, I had a question about the process, um, and I'm looking at page 29 of the packet, page nine of 18. Um, will the complaint be made public at the point of formal review? Um, there's the process where a council member can request agendizing the code of conduct complaint, will the public know what that complaint is at that point, that they're talking about? And if not, is that okay with, uh, having a discussion about something that is not disclosed to the public?
So, uh, there's two possible outcomes, one would be informal review, where one council member speaks with the person that's the subject of the complaint, um, and then the second option is formal review, and if two council members believe that the matter should be agendized, um, it would go on an agenda, and the complaint would be included as part of the agenda.
And, and let me add to that, we have to also recognize that generally, any of that information that comes in through the town clerk is subject to a disclosure in their public records, under, except in very, very limited cases. So I don't believe there would be an issue unless the council believes that some other format should be presented if it goes formal.
Okay, so with this process, then the complaint will be made public at that point, and will be published, um, here, once two members, uh, wish to get it onto an agenda, is that correct?
Yes, it will.
Okay. Um, and then I had one other question, and that's, in the other version, there was, I think, a proposal of an annual report of complaints provided to the council, um, is that not necessary here in this process?
Now that we're notifying all the council members of all the complaints, and then anything that goes formal is a matter of public record, we didn't see a need to then rehash another report that states, "What did you receive over the last 12 months?"
Okay. Councilmember Badami?
Thank you, Mayor. So I want to go back to this process issue, where perhaps it gets elevated to, um, the two council members wanting to have it placed on council matters. So typically, when an item is on council matters, I don't believe we take verbal communication, so it would just be a conversation amongst council. Do I understand that correctly? Or would the public be involved?
Yes, it's solely to see if there's two members that are willing to agendize it, there's no further discussion or action to be had.
Okay, so in that event, without taking public comment, then perhaps that eliminates the weaponization that, you know, some of us might be concerned about?
Well, you know, one thing to think about is if during council matters, two council raise it, and a majority of the council votes to put it on a future agenda, then the council would be taking public comment at the future meeting where it was placed on the agenda.
Thank you for that clarification. That's helpful.
I just have one thought, and I'm not, because this is a very new process that's being proposed, and maybe I need to understand it a little bit more before it comes to the council. But I do think this is, as the vice mayor says, moving toward greater transparency and potentially getting greater independence from a potentially biased mayor. But I think it trades that off with much more public and potentially disruptive time on the council meetings, dealing with code of conduct violations. Very few historically have taken a lot of time because at a committee level, they were not deemed to be major and egregious. And so I'm a little concerned about this very transparent and open process may, uh, leading to a proliferation of code of conduct complaints, particularly if there's a very split council and one council member can easily get another council member to put something on an agenda. And, you know, I don't think I've really seen that in this town, but I've seen more acrimonious councils in a couple of other places in Santa Clara County. So I just want to think about this a little bit, about whether this would, in the end, have an unintended consequence of taking up a lot of time with conduct complaints. So, Vice Mayor?
Thank you. Yeah, actually, that's a really legitimate point to raise. I do think if you had a council that was particularly divided, you could see a path where, you know, council members repeatedly bringing forward complaints against other council members. I, I don't know, you know, in thinking about that, I just don't know how to fix that. I, I have, you know, I was, and I think it's a good point you're raising, generally, that, that we're not creating this policy just for this council. We're creating this policy for, for future councils. But I, I think with, with, you know, this council and hopefully future councils, even when we disagree, I think we do so respectfully. And I haven't seen folks trying to like purposefully weaponize any of these processes. So I, I think it's a legitimate point, but I don't know that, that going to another method is preferable.
One thing about this, I'd, I'd really be interested in a bit of a survey of communities, a little broader survey of communities and whether they use this council process or whether they use a committee process, understanding that our existing committee process has got a flaw in it that, that makes it untenable. It would have to be changed. But I did a little research on my own and a number of municipalities have a standing committee of the council to handle complaints. And it isn't necessarily the mayor, but it's appointed by the council. And that handles a variety of complaints, not only council member complaints, but other complaints with town officials. So I, as we move forward with this, we're not voting on this tonight, but I would be interested in more information about how other cities handle this.
I'd be happy to speak on that. We did do outreach to the local jurisdictions in Santa Clara County, and there were very few jurisdictions that actually had specific rules against council member conduct. We did take some language from some of the other jurisdictions that had some similar language. I believe it was Mountain View that had something similar to our process. But a lot of the other jurisdictions didn't have anything specific in terms of enforcement.
And if I may, I had the fortune of speaking to two council members from Los Gatos that were here during the formulation of the original policy. The original intent was centered around very acute, significant activity that was occurring. We have now developed a policy where we're looking at pretty much everything. And so it's evolved. And so again, it is an expression of what your desires are. And so if you want to go to a committee of the council, which is an agendized committee as opposed to the entire council, that is the direction we can go. The real honest approach that we're taking is, if a complaint is made by anybody to a council, and none of the council members believe it's something that needs to be dealt with in a public venue, then 60 days later, that, that expires and it's done. And if that public member doesn't feel that they're satisfied, or they still believe there's a wrong that hasn't been righted, the actions of the public in conveying that displeasure is when they vote for their candidate for council. And so I think we need to just decide, what's the real goal we want from this policy? What kind of behavior do we really want to regulate? And how do we then get to whether we take a sanction or not in a manner that's expedient and objective?
Other comments on this? Vice Mayor?
Yeah, just a quick one. I appreciate the manager saying that, that the acute language, I think, is exactly what I was sort of thinking about and looking for. When I think about the policy that's proposed, I really see that as for acute, egregious, significant, you know, issues. And I think what, what it alleviates is bringing forward less significant complaints. I think if two council members, at least with, with our councils and I think similar councils I've seen in the town of Los Gatos, to get two council members to say, I want to have a public discussion about the conduct of another council member, I would think it would have to be pretty significant. And, and so I think, and I think that is the goal of this, at least that's my goal in creating this policy. So I think that's helpful background and, and I think this policy does just that.
Okay, other comments on the code of conduct? And then let's go back to section eight. Councilmember Rennie?
Thank you, Mayor. So section 8E under nonprofits, so this is probably a question for the attorney. You've got, you know, basically, council members can't serve on the board of directors unless, and then you have a long list of items with, with commas, and then you finish it off with an "and" the council member such and such, which implies the whole list of comments have to be "ands." And I question whether that should have been an, an "or" instead of an "and." This is page 74 of our iPad or page 25 of, of this section. And so, for, for example, if they're uncompensated, that should be, might be good enough. They recuse themselves, which is on the list, that's usually good enough. And you even have a problem where it says, well, if they're a town purpose such as the League of Cities, and if you're doing "and," that means if we're voting on supporting a League of Cities position, that council member's got to recuse themselves if the "and" is really what you want here. So my, my thought is, should this be an "or"? And maybe you want to combine a couple of these as "ands," but I really question whether you want to "and" this whole list.
Yeah. And can you, what's the page number, like on the top of the actual policy where it's, oh, page five?
Five of 18. And it's, it's in both, it's in both the alternate language and the original language.
Okay, just a sec.
So it's section 8E.
Okay.
Under legal requirements.
So two of those things in the list come from the state law. And so the two things from the state law are that the nonprofit has to support a town purpose and two, that the council member recuses themselves. So the other ones are at the town council's option because those are local requirements. And so, actually, I think the uncompensated comes from state law as well. So the, what's local to the town is the language that says the participation is approved by a majority of the council. And the interest is noted in the town's official records.
So, so again, state law is saying "and"? So if I'm on the League of Cities board, I can't vote on supporting their positions, then I have to recuse myself?
I think it depends.
That's what this, this is how this reads.
Yeah.
I, I think council member is correct that the last "and" is what you're referring to and/or the council member as it recuses, right? The intent being that if you're, it's uncompensated and it supports a legitimate town purpose, like the League of Cities does, or that the council majority, it was approved by the council majority, or it's a matter of town record, you can do it. Or you just need to recuse yourself if it's not that. Right? That's what you're talking about.
You're saying if you "and" all the previous list or the last item, that would make sense to me.
Well, if I remember correctly, the government code has the last one as an "and," but...
So I don't think we need to solve it here. If you could think about this, because we're saying we're not passing anything tonight. I don't need to drag it out any further.
Okay.
I had a question. So with regard to the participation is approved by a full majority of the council, what's the mechanism for doing that? Is it once a year?
It would be by action of the council. It doesn't specify when and how.
Right. But from a practical perspective, would we have an agenda item on annually for council members to disclose their participation on boards or, and to get a vote on it?
No, we would, if the council was taking action to appoint you, it would have happened during the annual, I think we have the annual meeting where we appoint representatives to different bodies. Also, who we're sending as our voting delegate to the League of Cities, you would be voting on by resolution who that person would be.
Right. No, but I'm talking about who are sitting on nonprofit organizations, other than the ones that are appointed by the town.
My recommendation would be that that be handled as it comes up.
So the responsibility would be for the council member to inform the town attorney that they have been appointed to a board? And then for the mayor to put that on an agenda to vote on approval for it?
Yes.
Okay. Is that practical?
Presuming that council members aren't joining boards very frequently, going on and off, and it's happening throughout the year, I think it's pretty reasonable.
Okay.
I mean, more, one more thought. I mean, that's not an element of the government code. That's unique to Los Gatos. So, you know, the council could consider removing that.
Well, again, it, it seems to be that requiring the recusal would take care of it. But, yeah, so maybe have a look at that in the way that's structured and come up with something that's practical to deal with.
I don't know the intent between when this language was added. When I look at it, and I was talking to the clerk, if we follow the FPPC guidance, if there's a financial interest, you would recuse yourself. And that's really what's the matter at hand. There may have been some other reason why previous councils had added this specific language in terms of the interrelationship between council members being on boards and then the town coming in and providing funding of some sort. So you may want to just consider striking the entire language because the FPPC language would take hold.
Councilmember Risto?
Thank you. Yeah, I like, I like that better if we just follow what the FPPC says. I don't think it really makes sense that if someone wants to serve on a board, now it's pretty clear, it's a board that receives funding from the town. But if every time somebody wants to join a board, requiring the majority of the council to approve it, I don't think we'd have a problem with this council. But I would hate to see, you know, politics play a role in not allowing somebody to serve as they wish. And I can't really see a problem if somebody recuses themselves. So I think this whole thing could just be taken out and we know what the requirements are. Or at least take out the council approval.
Yeah, and I would, I would agree that if we focus on the financial conflicts and FPPC, I think that would be helpful here. I don't know what the history was, but I could see, as councilmember Risto points out, a majority not wanting a council member to serve on a board because they don't like the policy of that board. And that turning into a political discussion. It seems to me that the real issue is whether there's a conflict of interest that's financial that we really want to take care of. So. Councilmember Rennie?
So I'll just, to let you think about it, for example, if somebody's serving on the Los Gatos-Montes Reno Police Foundation Board, that could be, I think that's the kind of thing they were targeting, if a council member was also on that board. It's, it's very closely tied to the town. I think it may have also been targeting the chamber board also. And I, and I was on the Los Gatos Community Foundation and had to resign when I got elected. So those were some of the boards that it seemed to be targeting. But what I'm, I'm worried about is, you know, what if we, you know, and those, well, anyway, I'll just leave it at that.
Okay. Vice Mayor, a different point? Yeah?
Yeah, different part of the council before we jump to commission, so we have a few minutes. I was just looking at, back to 11 really quick. I just wanted to point out, it seems that the issue that, that we were talking about with, that I think is actually contained within, I don't remember where it's contained now, but the issue about elected officials. The general conduct bullet under item 11 reads, council members are expected to communicate honestly, respectfully, and transparently, and to avoid statements or implications that could mislead the public, other agencies, or town staff regarding the official position of the town or town council. I think that, to me, takes care of a lot of the, the concern that was raised earlier. So I just wanted to, to point that out.
If I may, Mr. Mayor, summarize what we gathered in terms of what the majority council wants to change?
Please.
Okay. In terms of section 8E with regards to whether we put an "and" or an "or," we will strike the entire section? In terms of community events, the bullet point in section 11, we will remove the entire bullet point with related, related to the community events. And then all other amendments that were made in the alternate policy attachment two would be what we'll bring forth to the next council meeting. It sounds like that's what we'll do. Okay. We have about 22 minutes, so we can flip over to...
Risto?
Councilmember Risto?
Thank you. I, I didn't mean to interrupt the town manager. I just wanted to make sure as we switch over to the commission policy, that we just get them, I wanted to make a motion that we temporarily suspend the restriction on commissioners serving on nonprofit boards, you know, that are receiving town funding and suspend that right now until we can get that straightened out with the new policy.
Question for the town? Question for the town attorney. Can we make a motion and vote on it at a study session if it hasn't been noticed?
So let's see. So the agenda item says, review and provide feedback. So I do recommend that it come back, the motion to suspend, come back on its consent calendar.
Okay.
No, I'm sorry. The, I'm sorry, the agenda also said consideration of a temporary suspension. And so it wasn't properly agendized for the study session.
Yeah, I thought you needed that tonight, or you were requesting it. And so I feel like we need to do that tonight.
Okay, thank you. Vice Mayor?
Second.
Any further discussion on that? Okay. Roll call vote, please.
Early. Councilmember Risto?
Aye.
Councilmember Rennie?
Aye.
Councilmember Badami?
Aye.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Moore?
Aye.
Mayor Hudes?
Aye.
So that passes, okay. We can, to the commission code of conduct at this point?
Thank you, would you like me to go through the policy committee's recommendation, or the policy committee recommendation with the alternate language?
I think it'd be better to go through the alternate language version. I think we've read the, the previous version, so.
Perfect. Okay, so we'll go to attachment five, which is page fifty-five of the packet, would be the first page. For most of them, you will see the black language underlined, and then alternate language right after. The intent is for the alternate language to take the place of the black language where it's applicable. And so the first alternate repeats the majority of what's already there, underlined, but it adds to it, that nothing in the policy will transfer any authorities of the council or manager to a commission or individual commissioners, just to make sure that by absence, there's not, something doesn't occur that wasn't specifically authorized, and that nothing in the policy shall infringe on the constitutional rights of commissioners, including the right to free expression, to make very, very clear, that nothing to the policy is intended to abridge the First Amendment right of our individual commissioners. I don't know if you want to talk about one alternative after the other.
Why don't we just see if there's any comments on that alternative? Okay, I don't see any, keep going.
Thank you. Page two, there's just a couple of typos, which I think are pretty straightforward. And then, alternative language two, we're changing the title of that section from legal requirements to compliance and operational requirements, to more appropriately reflect all the items that are under that section. And then we'll move to the next page, page three.
Okay, if we could just stick on that page for one second? I had second thoughts about removing the mister, miss, or miss, followed by the last name. It seems like in some of the commissions, it's okay to do that, and sometimes easier for people to say, so I would suggest that we say, that it, leave that in as okay. Any, any other thoughts on that? Vice Mayor?
I don't know if you're referring to what the feedback was from the DEI Commission, but I, I don't know if that, referring to that, I think something about inform out, like, it's fine if the commission agrees to use informal titles, but I think the mister, miss was about gender neutral, to me.
And the section also is a should, it's not an absolute requirement, the intent is just to be respectful in how we refer to one another.
Yeah, I see, striking it eliminates that possibility, where in some places it might be appropriate, so, if, I think if it were being used in a way that was discriminatory, we might look for other gender neutral terms, but I think just for the natural flow of meetings, it would be helpful to keep that in.
I don't know, is that what the council desires?
Vice Mayor?
I don't have super strong feelings about it, but I actually don't, I think chair, vice chair, commissioner is, is better. I think if you really wanted to keep mister, miss, misses in there, you'd want to add a gender neutral title, like MX, I've seen. But I don't, I've never heard anyone in Los Gatos use that. I think if that were the case, you'd use something like commissioner.
And I think the intent was just to be consistent with council, as council members always refer to each other as council member or vice mayor, and we just wanted consistency with the commission, so that they would refer to each other as commissioner, as vice chair or chair.
Council member Aristo?
Thank you, whoops. Okay, thank you, yeah, I, you know, I was the one who wanted that struck, saying should refer to each other as commissioner does not preclude first names or mister, misses, if that's the convention that specific commission was. So I think taking that out, I don't think we need to suggest it, I prefer people to remember that they're fellow commissioners. All the commissions I served on, we used those titles, and it wasn't cumbersome, and it's actually easier, because you don't have to try and guess, especially for women, are they married or not? So, I don't know, I, I prefer it out of there, and because the should not shall, if a commission decides to use first names or non-commissioned titles, they can make that decision, nothing we're doing precludes that.
Any other thoughts on that? Okay, then we'll let that go. Vice Mayor?
I don't know if it's appropriate, can, I was just gonna make a quick suggestion that we go through maybe the more controversial pieces, so we can provide that feedback to staff ahead of the, you know, next time this comes back.
Sure.
And we were getting that, the next one is a minor one. Alternate language number three is under nonprofit organizations, we had a restriction here on whether you can serve on a board director or not, what we did is change the language to reflect requiring recusals if you were going to participate in a decision where there's an interest, which aligns closer to what the council has. And then, two sections below that, under the work plan, we instituted a work plan process to ensure we're able to explicitly know and have council approval on what commissions should be working on, but then also offer the opportunity for them to have discussions or activities that don't require staff work to occur during the course of the commission itself, meeting itself when it's agendized. And anytime during the course in time that there's a desire by a commission to engage in other activity, whether it be external outreach, external surveys, count, traffic counts, or pedestrian counts, we can easily amend the work plan to be explicit about what exactly we're asking them to do, and, and then proceed with the official mechanism we use internally as staff to implement that. On the next page, there's alternative language four, however, I'd like to skip this one, because alternative language five replaces this entire section. So we go to fifty-nine on the PDF, or page five of the policy, alternative language five replaces both the two sections above, and this is all about communications, interactions of commissioners with the public and externally. We took out a lot of the specificity of example of that, that's listed above, and we just go straight to when they're addressing, when a member of any of our advisory bodies are addressing internal bodies, whether it be the council or other commissions, they just need to be, be clear on who they're speaking on behalf of, the body or the individual, and I think we've seen that here fairly regularly. In terms of external representation, commissioners are not authorized to represent the town outside of the official meetings unless they're authorized by the council to do so. Approval of a work plan item that came forth, the council would be that approval. And then when a commissioner is communicating outside, when they're not authorized, they're to clearly and explicitly convey that that communication is individual and not representative of the town. And so at any time, an individual commissioner can go and conduct any level of activity that a member of the public could do, and not invoking the town without any approval of council. However, if they want to use, I'm doing this on behalf of the commission, on behalf of the town, we would just need to get that concurrence of council, and we would give those commissioners some kind of letter that acknowledges they're doing this in an official capacity, so they don't run into problems when they're walking in with business or engaging members of the public.
Comments on that? Council member Rennie?
So this is where I think you're missing the quasi judicial language, because we do have a commission, we've put it in the council one, even if they're speaking on their own opinion and not representing the commission, they still have restrictions if they, if it's related to an upcoming quasi judicial decision.
I thought we had a different, I'll ask the attorney, different policy on planning commission itself with regards to their proceedings?
Yeah, I guess we have one that's unique to planning commission, I think there's like, a handful of other commissions that do quasi judicial work, such as occasionally parks and recreation. So it might be worthwhile for us to talk about having this in here if it's not captured in another policy.
Vice Mayor?
Thank you, and then, sort of on the, the other side of that, I think that's a legitimate thing to bring up, I really liked Mr. Blum's language that he suggested, and, and including it here as like a part C. I would suggest a slightly modified version of that, but something to the effect of commissioners may speak publicly, including to the media, and are encouraged to support informed civic dialogue, however, they must clearly indicate whether they are speaking in a personal or official capacity, and may not represent the commission's views unless formally authorized by the council. Commissioners shall not commit town resources without prior approval. And then the last part, outreach, fact finding, and acting as community ambassadors is within the commission's scope, provided they're conducted professionally. The, the thing that I'm really trying to, it seems that some of our commissioners really do feel that, that this is not letting them do their jobs well, and B, act as those community ambassadors, and so I want to emphasize in the policy that that is part of what we encourage our commissioners to do.
Council member Badami?
I disagree, I like the idea that the mayor is the ambassador for the town, and I'm a little concerned with just opening things up for the media. What I like is that things get cleared by the town managers, so that nothing is misstated that might be taken as an official capacity if somebody does have the title of commissioner. So maybe I'm old school here, but that's my opinion on this.
Just from a practical perspective, I know that when the media interviews people, yeah, the individual can say, I'm speaking for myself and not be on behalf of the commissioner of the town, media is under no obligation to publish that, and in fact, they never do. So it, it does come across that way, and so I think we should think about that sort of practical aspect of it. Vice Mayor?
But then I think you run into a practical issue where, you know, council members and members of the public can communicate with the media, and there's this special class of people, town commissioners, that are the only people in the town of Los Gatos that have this, this First Amendment, that, that are stripped of their First Amendment right to communicate with the media, so I don't think that that is appropriate.
Council member Badami?
To that, I would say that the commissioners and committee members serve at the pleasure of the council, and they are advisors to the council.
Yeah, I think Ms. Yick raised a very important distinction, that I think maybe we haven't quite covered, and that is that commissioners should not be representing policy issues of the town, or the council, or their commission, unless they're authorized to. On the other hand, commissioners should be able to obtain information and gather information without a lot of restriction, and I'm not sure that we quite get at that distinction with this.
Really, it's just the way you want to approach it. When you select a commission, do you, are you empowering them to go out and go forth and use the name of the town and their status as a commissioner to gain access and information for the purposes of advising the council on any matter that could be before the commission? Or through your work plan, are you defining the specific things they're supposed to be working on that you're authorizing? So if they're, if a commission's looking at, you know, the implications of e-bikes on a path, and you're authorizing, yes, you can go out and represent us. I think it's the decision of the council, but I also want to make sure we're clear, at what point does a commissioner then go out of the bounds that then can lead them to a sanction, because those typically will come up for the staff liaison.
So, I wanted to get a little more context, town manager, about your concern about this, and the concern about the work plan. Is it primarily because going outside of the work plan would cause additional work for staff that really hasn't been authorized for council? Or is it because the commission then steps out of the advisory realm and into a policymaking realm?
It's a mix of both. The council is the ultimate policymaking body, you are also residents and advisory on what the town, the thirty-three thousand residents in our businesses desire. You've empowered the commissioners to also be advisory to you on matters that are relevant to the council. And so if your intent is to ask commissioners to go out on their own on any aspect of the commission, to gather information, to then tell you what you should be doing, and in effect, changing the direction, the policy direction of the council, you at least need to be in a position to tell them what you're looking for in terms of the activities they're performing. Because I can go out, because I have a desire in a certain area, and bring forth material that then drives the council into one direction, but it not, may not be aligned with what your strategic priorities actually are.
Okay, thank you. So I think with that, we're going to close this discussion, and I would suggest that we agendize another study session to pick up where we left off. Given the work that's been done on the council side, I hope that we can continue to make progress on that, maybe bringing something back a little, a little further mature draft, and then on the commission side, to kind of pick up where we left off with some of the thoughts that are here.
I believe based on what the council advised, the code of conduct would be ready for a formal action of council in its next iteration.
The challenge with that is that if we were to take that action, where would that leave our current policy for commissioners, current code of conduct? We don't have one for them.
We wouldn't have one for them, so probably we'd need to bring it back, and then perhaps adopt a resolution that said, the existing code of conduct continues to apply to boards and commissions.
Okay, so we wouldn't have a gap if that were the case? Or do we have a gap?
If the council was open to living with the existing code of conduct for boards and commissions, there would not be a gap.
I think we have to, right? Okay, so I'll, we'll conclude this meeting, thank you, this meeting's adjourned, and we will start the next meeting, which is our normal town council meeting at seven oh five PM. Thank you.